We'll call this meeting to order. Will you all please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Before we do the roll call, just kind of a point of interest here. Councilman Couch may have to leave early, and so when you do, if you do, just get up and go. That's fine. All right, thank you. Cheryl, will you do the roll, please?
Here.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Here. Present.
So I am looking for an approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
Second.
So we had a motion by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilman Couch. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion made to approve the consent agenda by Councilman Couch and seconded by Councilwoman Kinser. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. So we have a special recognition, and I am going to ask Stephanie Lacavo to come up here if she would, please.
So Stephanie has worked through the pillar in our fair city for several years. You know her best from the Thanksgiving camp that she helped make us do, and posted on Twitter. Stephanie continued with the Thanksgiving deal for 10 years and has remained in the capital to get her now. In January of 2010, Stephanie stepped into the position of planning commissioner. She contributed her time and intellect to tackling this position, and she took it on with passion. She served faithfully in her home for seven years, also giving great consideration towards that city and citizens of Cedar Willy. Stephanie has been a member of Seracca's club, working in the lift shop, and then speaking with various partners at the great job, who's working with the learning of her children in Soul District where she worked for 20 years. She helped implement the accelerated reading program in her cell, and was part of the excellent progress to bring to the area with this little district. So it's the great choice of Stephanie that I have this honor to be there in this position. We have served a community with a lot of involvement, and we accept this. Appreciate the work of the people who want to contribute. And it says, "As a typical recognition, awarded to Stephanie the full recognition of the conservation of Cedar Willy, we are pleased to see you in our position." Thank you.
Say, President, everywhere you go, Jared Allen. Jared Allen, my student, is a very good fellow. And he's doing a good job. You're doing well. Come on, thank you very much.
We're very honored to have Stephanie working with us. Thank you. Up next, we have the Cedar Willy Little League with Mike. Mike, I saw you here earlier. Hello, welcome. Come on up.
How is everybody?
Good.
My name's Mike Harwood. I'm here to present. The Cedar Willy Little League has been asked to host the 12 U State Little League Championship Tournament here in our fine city. It's the first time ever that we've been asked, after doing several district tournaments, we proposed this sometime early December, and after taking a look at what the impact would be and what a great privilege it would be, we decided to accept the task. We've had some great ideas. The tournament will start July 21st. It will be held at Jackie Fields for the first four games, or first four sets of days, and then, starting on the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, will be played right here at our new Teseric Ballpark. It'll bring in somewhere between 950 to 1,100 guests into our city. I've met with most of the hotel groups throughout the area. Our goal is, with the New Downtown Association and the Chamber, is to keep people right here in downtown Cedar Willy. So we've worked on several different plans on how to do that. On Saturday evening, we're going to have a street party. It's going to be invited to everybody in the city. It's going to be welcoming to all of the outside. There'll be 13 districts that will be represented throughout the state of Washington that'll come here to Cedar Willy. And those 13 districts will come as far as Walla Walla, Spokane, Vancouver, Washington, and hopefully ourselves right here in Cedar Willy if we can play well. Whether depending, I guess. But with what we've been doing, Nathan with the Parks Group has just absolutely been fabulous. The Teseric Field is kind of the reason why the state of Washington and the District 11 group came to us and said, "You have such a beautiful cornerstone ballpark in a beautiful downtown area that we'd love to be able to have you participate in this." So we feel that we've got a lot of our bases covered, so to speak, and we're hoping that we have a great turnout. There'll be some great teams, some great baseball. The winner of this portion, so the winner of this state tournament would be the representative in California to be our Western Regional Representative. So the team that wins will go and play on ESPN in the Western Regional Championships. One of the things we're working on right now, it's going to be a first time, I just got the legalization paperwork passed by Little League Baseball, that we could televise the Little League State Tournament championship game here in Cedar Willy. And the reason why is Amazon is very interested in being a part of that through their Amazon Prime streaming broadcast. So we are going to be kind of a guinea pig, so to speak, and see if the sports side of what they're trying to do with Amazon will kick off the ground. And it'll be more of a highlight film that will be of the entire city. So we'll have different things that'll be going on, different things that'll be filmed, then we'll all be kind of pieced together and put together for that one championship game. And it should be really thrilling for the ballplayers that participate, as well as everybody in town. It's really going to bring a real uplift. Not many people know where Cedar Willy is. I truly believe that they will by the end of July. So, thank you so much for letting me come and give you a little bit of background. Is there any questions?
Mike, I know you need some additional support on this. How are you doing with your fundraising and sponsorships and all of that?
So, thank you. Yes, we are looking for sponsors. I have sponsorship forms available always with me if anybody needs any, but we're looking for sponsors. We've got a very nice program that we're putting together. Matter of fact, I have a meeting tomorrow with the Skagit Valley Herald. They're going to be one of our major sponsors. Dick's Sporting Goods is a major sponsor. We have EcoSafe out of Vancouver, Washington, through the Seattle Mariners. The Seattle Mariners have been a very big sponsor to this program. But we're all looking for local help, volunteers. The Rotary Group has, Club has offered to provide volunteers for us, but we are also looking for other city members that can step up and help us. Score keep, as well as pitch counts. Concessions will be provided, T-shirt sales, so we're looking for all of that kind of stuff as well. Any other questions?
I actually do. You were talking about that you're trying to keep everybody here providing space for them. How are you thinking about doing that? What are your thoughts?
So, we don't have a whole lot of hotels in town, so one of the ideas that came up at one of our Little League Board meetings was to take Riverfront Park and turn it into an RV camping area throughout the whole area, kind of where we have the carnival throughout the carnival season. That would be monitored. We have board members of the Little League Board that would monitor that. We would be responsible for laying it out. The reservations would be done, if it's cleared through you. Reservations would be done through our Little League website. One of the things, if you haven't participated, a lot of the parents travel via RV to these events. A lot of them have traveling teams that are traveling right now. Matter of fact, I know my boys played in Winatchee this last weekend. So it's already started. It was a snowed-out game in Leavenworth on Saturday, not a rainout. But with that being able to be done, if we're able to hold some RVs down there and turn that into kind of a local camp area, I really feel that that would help keep people here locally, as well as Three Rivers is a great sponsor of ours, and we've got rooms available there, as well as, you know, just the other ones, a couple of them in Burlington and different areas.
Doug Wood, who's with the Rotary.
Rotary, yes.
He did offer to have dry camping at the Rodeo Brands.
Yeah, and Doug and I have played phone tag, but that's another spot. Any other ideas? I mean, I'm very open. I mean, this is our event. It's not Little League's event. We're just the ones responsible to make sure that it runs right. I might get fired if it doesn't. I don't know if volunteers can get fired, can you? Yeah, I guess so. But we're going to make the best of it. If you have any other ideas or anything, please get ahold of me.
Hey, Mike, just one quick idea. You know, we do have a number of RV sites already. Little League should probably rent whatever hasn't already been reserved, so you could then make them available to your members.
Yeah, that would be.
You'd want to come to City Hall, maybe tomorrow if you could.
Okay.
Because we have five at Bingham and, what, 20 something at Riverfront Park, but we do take advance reservations, so.
So we ought to scoop.
You guys ought to scoop them up.
We ought to scoop all those?
Yeah, I would.
Okay. Yeah, thank you for that. I did not know that.
Well, if there's nothing else, thank you for coming.
Thank you.
And we're very excited about this.
Yeah, thank you.
Very cool.
Thank you.
All right, and we have Andrea from Wadstock.
Hello, thank you all for having me. I've also brought some of my colleagues who are designers for some of the upcoming projects we have in your area, so it's nice to see some of you again. We had an open house here last month and partnered with the city. It was great to have them, as well as supportive of Skagit here, to be able to answer questions. There were about 30, 35 neighbors or so that did swing by the high school, so we appreciated that space. Lots of interest in city, the bottom photo is everyone interested in what was coming up with the city. And this is something that City of Cedar Willy did put together, but I thought it was a great visual, and so I asked them to share it with us, but it kind of shows all of the different, all the different colored lines for all the different city, county, and state projects that are kind of happening in your area. So this upcoming year, so there is a lot, a lot going on. And I'm going to turn it over to Ben to kind of start with our first project.
So the SR20, SR9 handsome Cedar Willy area paver is a simple mill and fill paver that's going to go from this intersection with SR9 all the way out past Fruitdale on SR20 and up SR9 from SR20 up pretty much to the city limits. And it's going to, we're resurfacing the road, so it's just a simple mill and fill, and we will be upgrading a pedestrian curb ramps to be ADA compliant. It's going to have overnight work for the paving, all the grinding and the actual paving will be at night, which will necessitate single lane closures, and the curb ramp work will be during the day, and we'll have to detour pedestrians around the closed crossings while they're being worked on. Plans to start work in late spring and to have it all completed by the end of summer, or by fall. And the next project is Gribble Creek Fish Passage on SR9 just north of, just north of Big Lake. There's a covert that's a barrier to fish passage, and this project will be removing that covert and replacing it with a larger box covert to open up more habitat to the fish, and this will necessitate a five-day full closure of SR9, and we are expecting to start work on this one.
I see you're starting that in June. How long will it take to do that approximately? Any idea?
I don't know the schedule on that one.
The full project will take about three months to get done. They're not going to be able to do most of the work until July.
Okay.
And passing.
Well, yeah, you were talking about, you said SR9 would be closed for that? Is that what you said? Or did I misunderstand you?
Just for five days. Just be a five-day closure.
Now, is there a good detour route there?
No.
I kind of knew that, but.
We will be working with a lot of advanced messaging when this is coming, so people can plan ahead around it, but as you guys know, there is not a great detour route for this area. So there, you know, those who know may use some of the back roads. The official detour will be likely.
Okay.
Pass it over to Mike to talk about the project.
Okay, let me see if the video works.
Can you push the play button on from the computer view? We'll skip it. I'll send a link and it's online.
So this is a region-wide resurfacing project, but there's, as you can see, there's quite a few areas that are within Skagit County and affect Cedar Willy. The work has actually already started. Started about a month ago, and they will be going probably about till the end of September. It's a long project, a lot of miles to cover. So there are going to be multiple closures for this project, just the way, the nature of the work, they're going to have to come through and crack seal, then they'll come back and do some pavement repair, and they'll have to come back again in late summer to place the actual chip seal, which is the resurface with the oil and the chips that'll extend the life of the pavement. Crack sealing and pavement repair, depending on the area, it can be done at night, but I think SR9 is all mostly day work. But the BST placement itself requires a certain temperature, and in Washington, in this area, we're lucky to get that temperature in July, and so that will require daytime work and daytime closures. And these closures, and because of the SR9 route, the portion of SR9 that's getting resurfaced is about 12 miles. Contractor is allowed to have multiple closure areas within the route, so people driving through can expect multiple closures just on going, driving up SR9. Yeah, lengthy delays because of the multiple closures, and each section of road they can close can be up to a mile and a half. As I said, they're a mile and a half long, zones, and most of these operations are moving operations, the crack sealing, the pavement repair, and the chip seals as well. The contractor's moving pretty quickly. Kind of covered everything else there. With the chip sealing process itself is when cyclists most likely would want to avoid the area with all the loose rock on the shoulders and. So another project that we have this summer is the SR9 Francis Road Roundabout, which is also within the limits of the chip seal area, as well as Gribble Creek is also within the limits of the chip seal. Francis Road Roundabout is, roundabout's going in to reduce crashes, reduce speeds, and reduce severity of collisions. Project has been awarded to SRV Construction, and they are expecting to start, late June?
After school's out.
Yeah. So there, once school's out, and there'll be lane reductions on the main line of SR9, but also full closures of Francis Road and Old Day Creek Road. So this picture is the existing condition, and this is visualization of what the roundabout will look like once it's in place. Back to Andrea.
So I know some of these, a lot of these things are not right in city limits, but I know you guys don't just stay here in town, so we wanted to make sure to kind of cover all of those, and that's what this one is too. If you do go north, if you hike, if you go up to the Deming area at all, starting actually on Monday, we're starting work on a roundabout at SR542 and SR9. This is that intersection where you can either turn right to Glacier or left to Deming, but it's kind of a rough left turn, not a lot of sight distance, so we'll be putting in a roundabout there to improve safety and slow speeds at that intersection and help everyone get through that area in a slower and safer manner. So there are going to be 24/7 flagging operations till about June up in this area, so just so you guys know, if you're hitting that final ski season, ski weekend of the year, or you have any travels up there, and this is what that three-legged roundabout is going to look like. Another project that could affect anyone who heads down to Mariners games is some paving and concrete rehab on I-5. So this was just awarded, but this is the stretch, so right before, kind of right where the Angel of the Hills Casino exit is, up to kind of where the Fisher Creek Fish Passage project was for a while, that's kind of that stretch here. It's going to be a multi-season project, and it's going to rehab pavement, concrete, do a bunch of different work to help improve I-5. There's thousands and thousands of vehicles that use this stretch each day, and it's been decades since major work has been done. So this is going to mean lane reductions during the day. There will be some stretches where it'll be two lanes instead of those three, and then overnight, it'll be one lane in areas. And again, that's going to be a two-season project, so I just want to make sure you guys know about that. And then we are available for questions here, all of our, the websites for these different projects. I also left some trifles in the back of the room that have all these, plus my contact information on them as well. And then the other thing just I wanted to let you guys know about is clearing of the North Cascades Highway and give you guys a quick update. So our Western crews are at milepost 148. Our Eastern crew started on Monday in there till about milepost 168 or so, and they're just getting to the avalanche risk areas and all the chutes. So we do only have about 20 miles to go to meet, but they are getting to the deepest part that takes the longest amount of time, but I just wanted to give you guys a quick update on that. But myself, Megan, Ben can answer any questions you guys might have.
I have a couple. Who's the paving contractor for, I'm assuming, the in-town part? Is it a continuation of what was done on SR20 last summer with granite, or is it a different contractor?
Yeah, it's a separate project. I believe it's granite.
So last year was Lakeside, this year will be Granite.
Okay. So what, what's the reasoning behind allowing for a mile and a half closure? Because I watched a lot of paving, and I did construction before I'm in my current job, you can't pave a mile and a half that fast, and you end up with what we had last summer, trying to go east on Highway 20, and you're sitting parked on Highway 20 for 20, 30, 45 minutes because you have a contractor that can't manage their work zones.
So I can clarify, I just want to clarify, so we have resurfacing and then we have paving. So the paving is what we're doing here in town. The resurfacing, what a lot of people refer to as chip seal, is what we did east of town last year, and that's what's happening on SR9. So just to be clear, we won't actually be grinding when we say resurfacing or chip seal.
So what is, what do you guys allow for wait times in a construction area?
We don't have, I'll let Shane, I'm going to, this is Shane, our engineer of kind of this area, so I'll direct that to him.
So we don't have specific wait times, however, generally we try to keep wait times below 20 minutes. And so for paving projects, we generally don't allow for more than a work zone of about three-quarters of a mile. When we talked about the one and a half miles, that was really for the ballasted surface treatment or the BST or the chip seal, however everybody calls it. That one, you've got a much, a moving operation. It goes a lot faster. The train has to be a lot longer, and that's where the mile and a half comes from.
I understand that from an aspect of what you've paved over before, but of traveling that area, and, you know, a lot of our people that are coming into our city to do business are coming from the east, and this is going to have a substantial impact because you have to do it during the day for temperatures. And if people are not being held accountable, your contractor's not held accountable for the wait times, that has a direct impact on our community and business in this town. So those, I just, I guess, kind of want it to be known that it's something that, when we get complaints, that our staff will be working with you to try to rectify those problems because I don't always feel like they're handled appropriately with contractors in the past.
Oh, yeah, just, yeah, definitely let us know. With the BST projects, we are, we are at a limitation just because we have to have a surface temperature that the only time we get that surface temperature here in Western Washington really is during the daytime during July and August. And we do have to stretch traffic control out, and sometimes we do have wait times approaching 40, 45 minutes max. Usually, once we get above 30, we're contacting the contractor, trying to see what they can do to better the situation. Sometimes we can do things, sometimes we can't.
And are there, my last question, are there expected closures on the, we have a lot of truck traffic that comes down State Route 9. Are there expected closures there during the day, and if so, is, where's the traffic going to be diverted and hopefully not through the residential areas that surround that? Is there, you know, if there's a plan for any closures there, if it's single lane only?
So the, I assume we're talking about the paver that goes through the city limits?
The, it's, I'm talking about the stretch of road that goes from SR20 north on State Route 9.
Okay. Yeah, so that, we're going to be doing one lane closures, single lane closures, we'll do them when volumes are lower, so that the highway itself can handle those volumes.
Thank you.
I have one comment. I love this. Could you guys like put it on television every day for the next year or two? There are so many people that don't seem to understand how simple a roundabout should be.
We are, yeah, so that's a roundabout trifle, but I had a few other, might not have been enough for everybody, but I can get you guys more as well. We're working on additional and updated outreach for our social media channels, things like that. It would be great if television stations and radio stations would want to, you know, cover that or do interviews, so we'll definitely pitch that to them. And, you know, just working on, with State Patrol on that education on, you know, yielding versus stopping, and, but then also us as drivers remembering that everyone drives a little bit differently. I know I do versus my best friend versus my mom. So having patience on the road too, and making sure we're all leaving enough time to get where we need to go, so that we aren't stressed out when we get there. But I'm glad you, glad you like it. We appreciate that feedback.
I had a question about the timing and how that might impact the former, the other speaker, the Little League tournament. Was wondering how is it possible to coordinate the scheduling at all? Is that wishful thinking?
Tell us, I missed the very, when the tournament is.
And the greatest part was that first weekend.
We always want to work around community events whenever we can, and we're going to, you know, work with the contractor. There are certain things that we can ask of them once they have awarded it, but once they see that contract, if we haven't put that out in what we have advertised, for instance, if we're doing anything in Mount Vernon, we will restrict work during the Tulip Festival. Large events like that, but it also, if we start to avoid every single event that's going in, because everyone also thinks that their event everyone also thinks that their event is, um, the biggest event, and we look at volumes, we look at how many, you know, things are coming to town, so whenever possible, we absolutely are going to work to, um, you know, not have big closures, um, but it's not always possible. But now that we know about that, I think we can definitely chat with the contractors, um, about that. The great thing about all these projects which are on SR9 is they're all out of Shane's office, so all of his team is kind of coordinating to, oh, we know they're, they're going to affect a lot of you, um, but we're going to work to make sure that they, the effect is as minimal as possible.
Well, and, and the good news is that, uh, very few of our projects work over the weekend. Um, the only one of these that I think would be working over the weekend is the Gribble Creek, uh, road closure, and, um, I don't have a schedule yet from the contractor, I think that they were looking very close to that timeframe, so I'll, I'll have to dig into that, but, uh, yeah, this was the first we heard about it, so we didn't put anything into our contract to restrict them from working at that time.
And July 3rd in Big Lake would not be.
Yeah, that's why I was asking about the closure, it was into June, five days.
And we don't allow any, any of the closures to happen, uh, near or within a half day of a, uh, holiday weekend, and, uh, with the 4th of July, the holiday also includes essentially the 3rd and the 5th.
Thank you.
What is the threshold for an event to qualify for you to modify the, the schedule for a contractor?
So typically, uh, what we need to do is know about it ahead of time and we'll put it into our contract, um, once, once we have a signed contract, it's much more difficult, uh, we can talk to the contractor.
It's a change order, right?
Yeah, it'd be a change order. And then, then we may have to negotiate money, um, just depends.
Because there's, uh, bonuses for completing ahead of schedule, et cetera, there's incentive for that. So Mike is here, he could probably give you a good breakdown of what we anticipate, but, uh, I think that was an outstanding question by Councilmember Carnegie, when we have this confluence of events, um, that, uh, compound congestion, uh, I, I would also like to piggyback on Councilmember Couch here on, people are always going to be looking for substitutes, um, when they hit congestion, and, uh, I, I think it's really important that we emphasize the freight traffic that had southbound on Highway 9 as a congestion relief or scale relief, uh, from I-5. And, um, we do emphasis patrol with the state of, um, Washington with the State Patrol there, um, also with our own local law enforcement. So it is something to be concerned about, it would be, um, uh, very shocking to people to see a 53-foot, uh, load of semi roll down North Reed Street and to, uh, get onto Highway 20 there or other substitutes. So my question, um, is how do we, uh, notify you in a, uh, quick way that this is happening and how we can get, uh, traffic control, uh, to be responsive? And I think, uh, to emphasize what, uh, Councilmember Couch was talking about is we've gone through this experience recently and we're, we're pretty fresh on this experience and we'd like those lessons learned from that experience to be applied forward here. Um, so how, so, so simply, um, when, uh, I, I see what we're getting to here is you would like us to email you, uh, when a constituent says, hey, I've been sitting in traffic for an hour or this big rig has just gone through, um, is, is that a 24/7, what's the anticipated response, who's, uh, what kind of response are we looking at locally to, uh, get, um, get that fixed?
So I, I work weekdays, um, I probably work longer than eight hours usually.
I'm looking for something beyond that, yes.
But, well, I think it's going to depend, so if, I, I guess what you're looking at is possibly an emergency situation where you want to call 911, uh, safety concern or?
I would, I don't think it would, uh, relegate a call to 911 an emergency that a 53-foot, uh, uh, trailer and semi is going through, uh, where eight and, uh, five-year-olds are playing on their bicycles on a, on a, a regular residential street, uh, I would want to be able to contact some hotline with the state and say, get this fixed now.
Okay, so outside of the, uh, Gribble Creek, the Fish Passage closure, none of these projects are full closures, they will always have alternating traffic through the area, which we will communicate through freight alerts, through email in advance of it, um, so there will always be access to the area, um, and drivers can choose to wait or they can choose to take an alternate route. And I, I'm not a truck driver, but I can't imagine that they are going to choose to go down one of these side streets versus waiting in the, waiting in the traffic, um, but at the same time, and, uh, uh, police who are here can, can possibly let me know, but there's nothing illegal about that if they are still going the speed limit, um, so I, I don't know what you would want me to do at 11:00 PM on a Tuesday if they are choosing to take that alternate route.
Okay.
Thank you.
But again, we will let them know that it's coming so that they can hopefully choose appropriate alternate routes. So, and, and please, I would say also, if, um, we're having this issue with some other, um, construction zones right now where people are exceeding speed limits on, on routes that they are choosing, so we'll work with city, we'll work with county, um, to help enforce that if that is ever happening, so.
Well, I want to thank you very much for coming because I know that this is a busy summer, that we have a lot going on here in Cedar Woolley, just as you have a lot going on. Yeah, it's just, you know, it's just the way it has to be, so, but thank you very much for coming.
We're excited to finish these projects and kind of, then we'll get out of your guys' hair for a little while.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Andrea. All right, staff reports, Chief Tucker?
Just a couple things here, um, last Friday night, we had a pursuit that, um, started out in, with a carjacking in Burlington, and, um, State Patrol was chasing somebody in Mount Vernon, I'm not sure who they were chasing, but it wasn't the right car. The right car came through Cedar Woolley and got grabbed by, uh, Sergeant Harris and Officer Pierce who pursued it out of town and into Big Lake where they, uh, ended up getting into a foot pursuit and introducing the bad guy who's a long-term bad guy to the world of tasers. Um, and fortunately, uh, two very experienced officers dealing with him, the guy was, uh, making motions like he was pulling a gun on the officers and it was really kind of, it was just fortunate we had some really experienced officers there, um, and didn't fall for it, but, um, the guy was doing everything he could to make us shoot him, uh, but fortunately we didn't have to, he's, uh, in the, um, Community Justice Center, um, hopefully he'll stay there for a while, he's a, a long-term criminal. Um, we've made a conditional job offer, or we got one set in there waiting for, um, uh, Brian Hoysen to come pick it up and start the process, he's currently working in the jail right now, and, uh, um, we did our oral boards recently and, um, came to the conclusion he's our best option. We still won't have any, um, ability to put him through the academy until August or even later, so it'll be a while before we can get him on the road, but, um, we're moving forward with that. And finally, um, we're working on doing some, uh, uh, some training in a tabletop exercise for City Hall and city staff on May 1st, um, we're going to try to do two sessions right around, uh, lunchtime, we're going to do like a, a 10 to noon and, uh, 1 to 3-ish, I haven't completely confirmed that, but, um, we're going to do a shorter presentation of our citizens' response to an active shooter, and then we're going to walk through and talk about a tabletop exercise and how we would deal with an active threat in City Hall. And we're working on developing evacuation plans and, um, making sure this fits well with our, um, our latest, uh, emergency plan that, uh, Emergency Services, Krista Salinas and Heather put together, so, um, you're welcome to come on and check us out on May 1st. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. Chief Quinger?
We've got our CERT training coming up, uh, this week, it's going to be running through the next few weeks, so there's still time, I believe, if anybody is really interested and like to get on, on board with the CERT training, which is the, uh, Community Emergency Response Training, uh, we can go through the Skagit County DEM and get you registered to attend that course. I was, uh, appointed to the, uh, DEM Advisory Board and unfortunately.
Volunteered.
Yes, volunteered, yeah, I, uh, unfortunately I missed the last meeting because of the structural fire we had in town, but, um, did last city council meeting, but just give you an update on that, uh, they've, they had their first meeting for the Advisory Board for the DEM and they agreed to meet again. It was an interesting meeting, that was, the outcome of the meeting is that they will meet again, um, and so I'll keep you apprised on that if anything comes out of that meeting. Um, we do have our, our confined space rescue, uh, courses coming up, certification courses for some of the new kids we have, uh, on the department and outside of, uh, our agency, they'll be, uh, training here and we'll be doing a lot of work down at the sewer treatment plant. It's actually kind of neat if you want, if anybody wants to come down and watch that, uh, they get out all the ropes and they're lowering themselves down, it's, it's kind of neat, we get out all the toys and get to, actually get to use them. Um, and, uh, just an update on the 315 Murdoch property, uh, that is going to closing, if I'm correct, on Monday, uh, so, uh, I hope, I hope so anyway, I ordered a asbestos abatement inspection on it. Um, we do know that the house does have asbestos, we will end up going through an abatement process with it, uh, but we, we have to go through the process, so they're going to come in Monday the 23rd. If nobody's ever gone through an asbestos abatement inspection, it, it's very, it doesn't take very long, um, but he's very thorough and it's kind of neat to watch and see what he's looking for, especially for somebody that, you know, might have an old house or something, and David, uh, is, is very open to having people come in and kind of follow them through, he's a great teacher, he teaches our asbestos awareness course for us every year, uh, here, so, um, you're welcome to come along, it's 9 o'clock on the 23rd, right next door. Um, other than that, we had, as you're aware, we had the fire, uh, down Sterling Street, uh, here a couple weeks ago, um, that was a fatality, um, we're still, we're still working on the final reports on that and, uh, once we get that, that'll be put out, we've already got several public information requests on it, um, so, once we get that completed, uh, we'll be putting that out, uh, for everybody to read through, but if you have any questions or feel free to come in and talk about it, so, that's all I have here.
When did you say the training is happening, you said where they go down the ropes and...
That's starting, uh, next week.
Next week, oh, okay.
Yeah, and they, the week of, well, it actually might be the week of April 20th, I'll have to double check, it's a Saturday I do believe, so.
Okay, all right, thank you. John?
Well, I apologize for missing the previous city council meeting as well, I was at a training, uh, for building code officials in Sea-Tac, it was lovely, let me tell you. So, uh, the planning department's been working on the annual April, what's called the April 1st Population Estimate Report, uh, the Office of Financial Management every year does a population count of the cities, and so we do reporting to them about how many new buildings, permits were issued, how many new buildings were approved, um, we count how many, how many properties are being used in all of the mobile home parks and, uh, contact the group homes to see how many residents are in each of the homes and do a rather exhaustive, uh, report to the OFM. They then take, compile that information and we'll get it sometime in July-ish when they're done. And I'm sure we'll see a big spike in population this year, which will help with, you know, get all, all of the OFM numbers that they produce showing our population, um, drives, how much money we get in everything from the state, you know, taxes and whatnot. So that's, that's an important process that we're finishing up here this week. Found out, kind of in a roundabout way, that later this summer, we're going to be evaluated by the Washington State Ratings Bureau, they do a building code effectiveness grading schedule every five, seven, eight years, when, kind of when they get around to it. Uh, so they'll review our building code process, our building codes that we've adopted, the qualifications of our employees in the building department, so I want to make a good impression with them. That will affect our, well, the Washington State Ratings Bureau, um, rating for the city, which affects our insurance rates, I believe, for the city and/or the residents, I think Patsy or Erin could, so according to Erin, it affects the, uh, the insurance rates for the residents in the city, so it's important that we do a thorough job and, good thing we've got excellent qualified individuals in that department. So I think we'll do good, hopefully better than, I don't know where we were in, in the last year, but I suspect we'll do much better than we have in the past. That we're expecting, I think, in September to occur, so we got a little time to get ready for that. You remember, late last year, we started an annexation process and I've been reaching out to property owners in the area, trying to get feedback on whether or not they're interested and it's just, this is, this is a very common process with annexations when I reach out to property owners, even property owners that I know are interested, we tend not to hear back from them, and so I make several outreach attempts and finally, we're starting to get some feedback from people and, um, it looks like this annexation process is finally back on track, we've heard from several individuals with help from some of the other annexation, uh, proposal, people that are interested in annexation, they've been making contact, so that's what finally shook the tree a little and got this annexation rolling. It's still going to be several months, probably before we see any petition come to the council, um, but we are back on track. You may recall at last council meeting, the council approved a contract with, I believe it's Pace Engineering to perform a sewer analysis, part, so they'll, uh, part of that analysis will look at what it will take to serve the area north of city limits with sewer, you know, specifically like where a pump station might be, study the topography and some of the finer details, that was a, uh, a requirement that the county had put on the city before they would, uh, permit any annexation of that area, so that's also coming together with this process. We're, the planning commission has been working on, uh, a couple items, I gave you an update on that last time. Uh, tonight you'll be, we'll be talking about, uh, the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Update, so I'm not going to get into that, but now that the planning commission finished work on that and brought it to the council, the planning commission is now working on the 2018, um, Comprehensive Plan Update, and included in that is just some minor rezones throughout the city, one of which is, uh, the property on Murdoch that the city has acquired, looking at converting that to, from residential to public, and now facilitate us using it for public uses. Dean was talking about the asbestos action, so we're, uh, investigation, we're looking forward to receiving a demo permit on that, and we see lots of, uh, asbestos investigations and asbestos investigations are really easy, if it's not wood, they look at it and say, that could be asbestos, especially if it's old. But David is, uh, is really qualified and, you know, lots of things that aren't wood are asbestos, but that's kind of how they start it, if it's, if it's not wood, it could be asbestos, so it does take a qualified individual, David's really good, we can, we've seen a lot of his reports, um, and works really quickly. I think that's all I have for the council tonight, if there's any questions.
All right, thank you. Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, our various projects are moving ahead, uh, the Fruitdale Contract with Trico has been executed and we're, uh, getting ready to schedule a pre-construction conference for that. We would anticipate they would start somewhere, uh, mid to late May, uh, depending on weather. Uh, the other design projects are all underway, including the, uh, Sewer Comp Plan Update that Don, John Dis mentioned, and the Jones John Liner Trail Road, uh, corridor study is kicking off as well, having a meeting on the 26th, and we've been gathering data for the consultant to work with, and, uh, I think we're all glad to know that Jones Road did get paved, uh, that happened last Friday, and now we expect the complaints to change from, uh, rough road to speeding. Now we expect the complaints to change from rough road to speeding. In fact, we've already heard some of that. But it's a good problem to have. Beyond that, on, in your packet tonight were a couple of conceptual layouts for the, the exciting new park up on North Fruitdale at the Swift Center entrance. Nathan had engaged Patricia with Filbin Group, same outfit that's done park planning at Hauser and some other spots in Memorial in town. And so they've taken comments that Nathan and myself and a few others have made on those two conceptuals and come back with a colorized version, which is up on the screen now. Anyway, this, this is still very conceptual and we appreciate your review and your comments on that. But one of the exciting things about it, Mike and I were talking about it earlier, is we do have enough room to put a Cal Ripken sized ball field in. That's kind of midway between Little League and Bay Bruce size, 70, 70 foot base paths on that. Seventy? Yeah, that's correct. Okay, I get that messed up sometimes. Sixty for Little League, seventy here. Anyway, that's possible in one corner there. And I understand from him that he thought that they might be able to even help that, help out with that, with their funding sources. So we'll look forward to partnering on that. There's room for a basketball court and a volleyball court. We have a off-leash dog area shown on the plan down towards the bottom left and a, and a play area that would be there as well as caretaker residence, so we can use our model that we've been using successfully with our other projects or other parks of having a caretaker to keep an eye on our investment there. And placing some shelters down on the lower right side of that, that would have a nice view of the pond down there. And of course, this would still be available. There's about a hundred parking stalls organized in this particular plan that would be available for the fishing derby. And also, there would be a partnership agreement between us and the Port that would allow them to use the parking for overflow for their events. And we have the sidewalks tied into what we expect, expect will be continued as a sidewalk path into the Swift Center site itself. So pretty excited about that. The really good news that Nathan's found out, I believe since we met last, and he can tell you about that if he would like or give you details, but basically, this donation or this transfer, the value of that would work as match for the RCO grants that we're submitting on May the 1st. And he feels that that's enough value in this, that it would provide 100% of the match requirement we would have for those. So that's, that's a very good outcome on that. And that should also strengthen our applications considerably, both for the Memorial Park, Spray Park renovation of Memorial Park and also the Hauser Field completion work that we have in those two different grant applications. So, good work on that, Nathan, and we're looking forward to seeing what happens with that. Also, in his world, you might notice out in the field behind us here that another basketball court is being constructed. The city crews have excavated and gravelled an area for a, for a basketball court. We're partnering with Rotary on that, as we do so successfully here in town. They have, are furnishing the funding to buy the goalposts and the city provided that labor already and that they're going to pay for a contractor to come in and pave that, that site and get that done. And I suspect we'll do the striping when it's all finished. But that's underway and do you have a paving date on that, Nathan? So anyway, that's going to be in place before the basketball tournament, which is a good thing. We're also having our budget this year to add a restroom facility at Bingham Park. It'll be a mirror image of what we have out here that Rotary partnered with us on two years ago. We budgeted $50,000 for that and Rotary's agreed to take on that project as well. And so we're going to do, on that one, as we did here, we'll do the excavation work and get everything ready for them and then they'll, they'll provide the labor to build that particular facility. And we'll try to get that in as early as we can this year too, to make it available for these events that we now know about. So that's basically all I had to report for you tonight, but everything's moving ahead pretty well.
Great report, thank you. Erin?
Well, like the fire chief and the planning director, I too was absent from the last meeting. The chief was at a fire and the planning director was in the C-TAC. My wife was in labor, so I'm looking for an excused absence on that. Anyway, all went well. Had a baby born on council night and we were excited to welcome a little girl to her house. Tully is her name, born on Ball Street. And everything has been going really well. So, I'm still mostly out, but I'm trying to keep up with city stuff and spent some time in the office today to work on various projects. My only other item is just really excited with your action tonight on the consent calendar to welcome Doug Murman to the city. His start date is likely about two weeks away, as Patsy has now plotted her, her last couple of months with us. And turns out she's got vacation ideas to, to fit into her last couple of months before she goes to retire. So, that's, you know, it's going to be quite a transition and we'll, we'll get some information to the council about kind of a Patsy farewell celebration. We get Doug on board, I think, near the top of May, so start looking for him. I'm, I think, expect to see him at the council retreat coming up in May as well. And just lots going on as usual. I don't really have anything new to report on the library front tonight. We're continuing to work with the architect team. We have not come to terms with an agreement yet, so we're continuing to meet. My, my absence, I probably wasn't super helpful to the timing of that, but we'll get, we'll get where we need to go on that and keep the council informed as we move through that process, as the county commissioners did. I don't know, maybe you want to mention this in your report?
Sure.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll save that then, or I'll take a pass on that. So, otherwise, that's it for me and I'll see you next time. Thanks.
I'd like to follow up saying that I've known Doug for years. He'll do an excellent job here at the city and I think you will greatly enjoy having him on staff. The team Bellingham is here conducting their annual visit. They've been plagued with illness. They were scheduled to have three people here during the entire audit. Some days they've had two, some days they've had zero. So I'm trying to hold them to their original schedule, so we don't draw this out too long. But Lucas is quite efficient and effective and he almost has the financial statement portion wrapped up. So far, no issues and I do not expect any. I expect tomorrow or the next day, they'll begin with the compliance portion, which is where they go out to different departments and check to make sure everyone's following the rules. And then of course, as I've said before, they'll let you know when the exit conference is. With your approval of the payables today, you approved the final payoff on the Hauser real estate contract for Winnie Hauser Park and Ball Fields. Ray graciously and generously donated one half of the land for this park and we paid some money down and then have been making annual payments on the balance. His, we worked out an arrangement with his estate where we just paid it off, making it easier for them and actually for us as well. The family is very pleased with how the pasture land has almost magically turned into a beautiful grassy field. They're very, very happy with how it looks. And I went over a few of the plans that Nathan has for the park and hopefully we will get grant funding so that we can make that vision a reality. That's all I have this evening, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Patsy. So I too want to welcome you, Doug. I was remiss, I should have said that when we passed it through in the consent agenda, but very excited to have you on board and, and I know that it'll be a good working relationship. So, thank you for coming tonight. Yep, thank you for considering Cedar Woolley and taking on the task. So I'll just finish out here, so finishing up what Erin was saying about the county commissioners. This past week, they approved to the Board of Trustees for the new library, Darcy Resitar. So, we do have somebody from the city of Cedar Woolley on the board, which is very exciting and also fulfilling that promise that our last mayor said that he wanted to see happen and so it has happened. So, so this is just my little report and then we'll go back to you.
Oh, and as the date is April 11th and as I work with the CPA, I've got nothing.
You've been busy. Okay, all right, Jermaine?
I just, I just came back from Philadelphia and every time I go back home, I, I go over so many potholes and some of them are so deep that you can lose your car in them. Even on the state highways, it's pretty crazy, the state highways and the interstate's over there. And I think, I think that they wouldn't even notice ours at all. And the people are just so used to them and it's pretty crazy, I mean, what they do to their cars over there. Another thing I was going to mention is, speaking of cars, I actually did, I did actually call Laura, our code enforcement officer, yesterday, I believe. I had a neighbor across the street kind of down a little bit come over and ask a guest to move a car because she couldn't see coming out of her driveway. This is on, on North Central Avenue. And then she complained that she couldn't see backing out and she was afraid to hit the cars across the street from her driveway. And she actually did back into my Jeep one time there and now I know why. And it's, there's a, an RV or a fifth wheel or something parked there, it's been for sale for several months. And it is really blocking and I worry because cars do fly up and down there. And she's a young driver and there's a lot of people in that household that back out right behind it. Somebody's going to get creamed. So I just wanted to make sure, maybe follow up with her, please. Thanks. That's it.
Thank you. Brenda?
Um, not a lot, just really looking forward to going to Revitalize Washington, April 23rd, 24th, 25th in Port Townsend to get a lot of information to bring back in regards to revitalizing our downtown, so really excited about that.
Thank you.
This weekend is Woodfest at Cedar Woolley High School and also out at Eagle Haven Winery in Little Brook Farm Manor. This is an expansion of what we've done in the past. We've actually subtitled it Timber to Tech because we see that as a broader description of what Cedar Woolley really is. It's a community that has evolved from just being about timber and lots of logs and great big cedar trees and all of that, to a very technologically advanced community. We have a lot of CTE programs at the high school and those programs have 13 disciplines and 40 classes. And I see every day where there is somebody saying how it's really important that we now have more people in the trades. For years, it's always been, everybody needs to get a college degree. Now they're going back and looking at the fact that a lot of good jobs are available that aren't being filled because somebody hasn't learned the skills necessary. So, I commend our high school for doing so and I hope you all will come out and see what they've been up to. And we're even going to have a little Pinewood Derby there, so bring your boys out. Girls too.
I have a couple of things. I just wanted to report that the senior center fund drive for Meals on Wheels was a great success, thanks to, thanks to a lot of the you people that contributed. And I think our total fund raised was about $26,000. So, I myself raised $906 and 99% were city employees. Everybody was very generous and it's going to help feed a lot of housebound seniors. So, I don't know how the $6 got there, but I think that's the one, I think that's what, what Erin donated was. But anyway, it was a success and, and thank you to everyone. And another thing is, I am very happy to see a flag flying in Memorial Park and thanks to Nathan, it looks very good. And that's about all I have. Any other thing is, parking is becoming kind of a headache because of the library. Not every day, but certain days, and it's, it's getting harder for, for the seniors to find a parking place. So, you know, I don't know what you can do about it, but maybe swing by and take a peek once in a while and you'll see.
You know, I've noticed that they've got a lot more programs going on that are drawing people in, particularly at different times of day, so.
Yeah, it's a very busy place now, the library is.
All right, thank you. Carl?
Hi. Just wanted to, I hope everyone had a wonderful holiday during the holiday week there and had a good spring break for folks. At the Wild Steelhead Egg Roll, we had, according to our law enforcement folks there, they estimated around 600 folks participating at Riverfront Park, which was awesome and really could show off one of the jewels of Cedar Woolley. And I wanted to thank Nathan for responding to the request. I was alerted by a veteran that, or the flag that was flying was in need of replacement. And thank you so much for getting that done within the span of a day. So, thank you for that. Originally, had a nice cup of coffee with State Senator Wagner and Representative Eslick, you know, talking about regional things and things happening in Cedar Woolley. So that, that was good that they're, especially Senator Wagner is working hard for us in Olympia and also ad hoc meeting with Representative Larson, who was, happened upon in the Woolley Market. And it was good to reinforce positivity of how he's a great connection for Cedar Woolley in DC, especially on federal funding and federal grants on our infrastructure here. Walking around the, my Sunday scrolls through the, through the ward, it's, folks are talking about speeding on State Street. So I would like to know how one is able to schedule the, the trailer that indicates the speed and what it takes to, to park that there for a bit and then collect the data because I believe it has an IP address that we're able to do that with and put that into our formula of, of perception versus reality. So, I'd like to have a little more follow up on that. And also wanted to thank Public Works for replacing a stop sign that was run over on 11th and, and State there. Thank you for the fast reply. Folks are talking about, I know we're, we're talking about removing the tracks there by, where the new libraries come in, especially on State and also on Ferry. Folks are, it's a hot topic of the potholes and the damage that they feel is happening when they go across the tracks there multiple times during the day. We had talked about inserts at one time and I've gotten the information back, well, you know, those tracks are going to go away. I'd like to know what the timeline is on that, so I can report back to my neighbors that this is how much longer they have to endure that. Really, we're working on it. I also understand we're, we're dealing with the railroad with this and it's, it's a great process. I would appreciate some data I can get back. So, again, thanks all staff that are working so hard for us and it is appreciated. Thank you.
Jared?
I want to echo a couple of comments and just welcome Doug aboard to Cedar Woolley. We're very lucky to have you and you're lucky to be with Cedar Woolley. I just will say, because I know, maybe everybody else was afraid to, but you've got big shoes to fill. So, best of luck to you and we're happy to have you. Like to thank DOT for being here and their less than satisfactory answers for our concerns. So... So I would like to encourage council, citizens, anybody that gets complaints, to call the DOT office, like I spent most of last summer filing complaints about the mess with traffic, and now that it's affecting our city, it's a little more of a thorn in my side, and because I care about our businesses, and I don't want people to be avoiding town because the DOT can't manage a project because they frankly don't care, and they want us to call the police if there's, you know, a commercial vehicle in an area that it shouldn't be. A little bit of pre-planning and maybe some better signage or stopping truck traffic coming down 9. Apparently, it's too much thinking out of the box for them. So I would encourage people to call the DOT office, speak to the engineer, and let your complaints be heard, because I think the contractor needs to be held accountable because they're basically worried about getting their bonus at the end of the completion. So that's a little bit more of why I was asking those questions. That's all I had to report.
All right, thank you. And then one last thing, this Saturday, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, there is going to be a town hall. It'll be Senator Wagner and Carolyn Eslick. So put that on your calendar, we'd love to see you. I think it'll be a great time to ask questions and get questions answered.
Where?
Here. Yeah, here. Sorry. All right, so I am going to open up the floor right now for public comments, for anyone who is interested. It is 8:11. If you come forward, please remember to state your name and address, and limit it to three minutes. So is there anyone here for public comment? All right, well, I'll close that then at 8:11. Thank you. Onto new business. The first one has to do with the possible adoption of a resolution approving the Skagit County 2017 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. This is the first reading, so no action is required tonight. Mark, did you want to speak to this a little more, or?
Well, one of the major elements in what you see tonight is an update of Chapter 3, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. It's basically the same as what you saw when we went through that process last year with... Oh, I'm sorry. I misheard that. I'm just speaking about the comprehensive plan adoption. Sorry about that. Solid Waste Management, yes, that is a process, we're a member of the Solid Waste Advisory Council, Leo is, and they are in the process of updating the Solid Waste Management Plan, and this is first reading for that tonight. There's some elements of that that we're not particularly thrilled with, but they are under a timeline to get this finished by the 1st of May, and so this comes to you for the first reading tonight and possible action next time.
Okay. Are there any questions regarding this? Okay.
Is there a reason why this could not be passed at this time?
No.
No reason?
Is that all right?
Certainly all right.
Erin, do you have a weak motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we just approve this, because I don't think we have any reason to not go forward with the interlocal, and I think it should be adopted. And we just met with Leo as the Utilities Committee before this meeting, and it just seems appropriate.
Okay, so.
The motion is on page 60 of the packet.
Okay, so. I move to adopt Resolution 18-.
96.
96, approving the Skagit County 2017 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan.
A second.
Okay, so the, there was a motion to adopt Resolution, is that correct? 18-?
No, it's backwards.
Yeah, it looks like it's backwards. 1896-18, approving the Skagit County 17 Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan. A motion was made by Councilwoman Kelly and seconded by Councilman DeYoung. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Opposed.
Okay.
I'd like some more time to study, but I was wondering, you know, could wait till the next one, because this is only the first reading.
Yeah, you could have. I mean, that certainly was council prerogative. At this point, I think you've got a 5 to 2 vote adopting the resolution. My suggestion is next time, jump in with a motion to table prior to the calling of the question, and I would suspect the rest of the council would say, "No problem, we'll pick it up next time." So resolutions are, under the council rules of procedure, resolutions can be acted on at a first reading, just whenever the council wants. It's just entirely up to you.
Okay. So those opposed were Councilwomen Corningay and Cantor.
I will say, if it makes you feel any better, that we don't actually have much choice in this matter. There are a number of items that I would personally love to recommend that you not adopt in their comprehensive plan, and other items I would love to have you add, but under our interlocal agreement, where we took the marriage vows for 30 years, we also agreed to adopt their comprehensive plan, and so those comments would have, need to have been addressed at the time that the county adopted its comprehensive plan, Comprehensive Solid Waste Management Plan.
So I'm looking at this, and actually, I called the wrong, it looks like I called the wrong number for the resolution. Looks like the resolution should be 987-18.
We just corrected it on our side. It really.
For the record, I'm stating it.
Yeah, yeah, the number's not critical from our perspective, it's just that you adopted a resolution.
Right. Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on to page 62, the 2017 Comprehensive Plan Docket Amendment. So John, did you want to talk to that?
I'm not throwing anybody off by coming up here. I hurt my leg, so that's why I've been standing. This is just far more comfortable, it seems awkward standing over there talking to the council, so I'll just speak from up here if nobody objects. Thank you. Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission made a recommendation to update various aspects of the comprehensive plan. In the memo, it talks about all the hearings that they had, and included in the latter pages is the findings that the Planning Commission made. So that has a lot of the specific items that they covered, what, you know, the discussion items, why, gives you some of the background idea of why they came to the conclusions that they came. So I'll forego going over all of the details that the Planning Commission went over. I will cover, real quickly here, the items that they covered and what the result was. As you can recall, I'm sure, some of the items that the city council had asked them to work on was, first, the transportation element of the comprehensive plan. There were some changes that SAGA had asked us to make after we had made a previous adoption in 2016, so we brought those requested changes together. And Mark also included changes to the 20-year project list that was an update, was, came from council-passed TIP project list just a few months prior. So it's basically updating, there were not any significant changes to that, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to go into it in a little further detail. Additionally, the Planning Commission made recommendations to update the Parks and Recreation element of the comprehensive plan. That was last updated in 2012, but was considered up-to-date per the Growth Management Act, and so the Department of Commerce was all good with that, it didn't need updating, but the RCO, did, the state RCO, did require that we updated it, because they want it updated every six years. So in order to be eligible for the RCO grants, such as the ones that Nathan's been applying for, for two parks, we needed to get that updated. And so those updated, those updates are included. I would like to point out, as part of that, is the impact fees that we charge for parks comes out of the documents in that Parks and Rec element. So there's an attachment to that, which is the calculations for impact fee. So it looks at all of the proposed projects, it looks at the inventory of parks that we have, it looks at the deficiencies in areas and where the city wants to be. Does a tabulation of the available properties, how much it would cost to acquire, and construct all of the parks. Puts that in together, again, with our 20-year population analysis, and turns out a number of how much per new unit built over the next 20 years it would cost to construct all of those parks and trails and other facilities. Turns out a pretty big number, it's like almost $11,000 per unit. We're not recommending, staff's not recommending, nor did the Planning Commission even weigh in on what impact fee values should be. Right now, impact fee, the impact fee calculation is $1,500 per unit in the parks, and so that's what we're requesting, there's not any request, there was no discussion of changing that number. So if the council wanted to update that number, then we could do that either as part of this process or later, but it seemed like $1,500. There hasn't been any requests for that number to change, so we didn't, staff didn't pursue any requests to change that number, but it's, it's there for your consideration. It's a first read. Again, $1,500 seems like a decent number. City Council reviewed that a few years ago and stuck with that number. And then there was updates to the zoning map. The council had asked the Planning Commission to review the zoning of the property, the old Cedar Woolley Mill, also known as 109 Jameson. So the Planning Commission had a lot of public meetings and public hearings on that. The property owner participated in all of those conversations. As council knows, the city also acquired funding through the Department of Ecology to perform a Phase 1 environmental assessment of that property. That was completed in October. That information helped inform the Planning Commission on their decision through the process, and so the long and short of it is, we didn't get public participation. We had not really anybody with any recommendations. The property owner was interested in what they could do with the property. So the Planning Commission reviewed the history of the property, the surrounding uses of the property, the conditions of the property based on the environmental report that we received, and what they saw was, you know, it has a history of some heavy industrial use, so there's slight contamination on the property, you know, it's, you know, some underground storage tanks, leaking hydraulic equipment, that were just very minor things that are there, they're known, they're now being studied further under the Phase 2 grant that the city also received, and we'll be getting that report back in June. But based on, there are some environmental considerations on the property that the Planning Commission felt that the property might not be best used as residential, considering how that property's been used in the past. And I can't find it in the Phase 1 report, it's buried deep in the appendices, but I believe that there actually might be limitations from the Department of Ecology when they gave no further action notice on it. I wanna say that there was limited to non-residential uses also. I swear I saw it somewhere, but I can't find it again, so I'll keep, continuing to try to find that information. If that's the case, then you could never be residential. And then, so that would leave commercial and industrial type use, and Planning Commission didn't see that there was a whole lot of potential for commercial use in that area, you know, retail, anything like that, just because it's a lack of proximity to other commercial areas. Jameson, while is an arterial street, it's not thought of as a commercial strip. So ultimately, the recommendation was to make no change. And that, the result of that would be no action by the council on that property, it would continue to be industrial. The property owner's very comfortable with that, she feels that it is a good use for that property to continue to be industrial, and, you know, for what it's worth, industrial is limited for, you know, heavier impacts. We've already, the Planning Commission over the past several years, as some of the former planning commissioners know, limited the types of uses that can be industrial without going through a conditionally used permit process, which means if it were to be a high-impact use, like had been proposed in the past, it would have to go through a conditionally used permit process to be granted approval. So ideally, what we'd like to see is some of the projects that we've spoken, I believe Erin's spoken with the council about in the past, and, you know, lighter uses such as warehousing, or even more like Sunset Park, places where you can have larger buildings for small businesses in Cedar Woolley, and that indeed, I can say anecdotally, businesses do want to locate here, they do want a large building, not a super massive building, but a large building such as what, you know, the Seven Sisters facility is, or the old Aroma Creations Building. I'm trying to give visuals of the size of the buildings that I've heard anecdotally. Businesses would like to move into something like that. So if we could encourage a property owner to develop, or sell to a developer, building, property, to create those types of uses like Sunset Park, I think that would be well-received in the city, but it's a lot of investment, and we just need to find the right developers to make that happen. And then ultimately, there were a couple of other very minor zoning changes to the zoning map. A correction of property on Cook Road to realign the zoning boundaries based on a chart plot that they did, that one's pretty much administrative, and changes to our urban growth area boundary, because we included somewhere that the city owns down south, and the county in 2016 did not agree with us that it should be in the UGA, so they didn't include it in the urban growth area. So we have to change our maps to show what the county adopted, because they have the final say in what's in our urban growth area. So again, that's really more or less administrative, and that's it.
Any questions? All right.
I would like to point out, we do have to wait till the next council meeting, because the 60-day commerce comment period on this doesn't end until like April 23rd. So I got to the council as soon as I could, knowing that with two reads it wouldn't pass today, but at the next council meeting, and then the waiting, the five day after the council passes something, then we'd be good with the Department of Commerce.
Question, John. How do you guys determine the expected growth in the city? I mean, I saw that we basically were just under 11,000, and that we were expected by 2036 to be at 17-something. How is that determined? How do you come up with those numbers?
That's actually a very long answer, but I'll do my best, and planner is here to keep this under an editor, so. All jurisdictions in Skagit County work together. The, all the jurisdictions in Skagit County work together based on 20-year projection from the Office of Financial Management and that goes back to this 2001, or I'm sorry, April 1st population forecasting that we are doing right now. The FM produces a high and low range of what they expect our urban growth areas to, actually the county to be. And then, all the jurisdictions within the county work together to determine how much of that population is going to go to the rural areas and the urban areas and then which urban areas are going to take how much. And it's all based on our trajectory of growth over the past 50, 60 years. And then, it goes through the magical political process to come out the other side with a likely projection. Then, after those projections are reviewed and approved by the SCOG Steering Committee, then each jurisdiction goes back and does all of their planning based on those projected population growth. And that's what we can, that was a process that we started in early 2015, maybe even late, probably late 2014 and reviewed all through 2015 and most of 2016 before we adopted our 2016 comprehensive plan updates. Sorry, that was a minute and a half.
Okay. I just wanted to have some, some concept of how...
It's, it's a, it's a long and complicated process that goes through state...
Sounds like you're making sausage.
...state requirements and the, and all of the jurisdictions have what is referred to as a framework agreement where we have some rules that we all play by because in the past, none of those jurisdictions could get along, specifically cities versus county. So, the cities put in a regulatory framework to make sure that everybody kind of knows how the process is going to work. And it's actually been very helpful for anybody who's been part of the SCOG Steering Committee actions. The framework agreement's been, well, it's extra steps that we take in the GMA process. It sounds like things were really bad before that framework was in place and the cities and the county were at loggerheads quite a bit and things are, move a lot smoother now. Our last process went pretty well, there wasn't a lot of acrimony between any of the jurisdictions and the county, which either we're learning how to do this better or it's a good process or both.
Appreciate your input. Thank you.
Thank you, John. And then, on page 224, we have the ordinance, the 2018 budget amendment number three. Patsy, did you want to speak to this?
Sure. As a budget ordinance just has the total by fund, I usually present a memo that itemizes the changes by individual funds so the council can see what's going on. And as we have three new council members who weren't here for the budget process, I thought I would give just a couple highlights on the memos. First off, we do our best to estimate what will happen in the rest of the year. And of course, nothing ever turns out exactly as planned, so that's why we have budget As you may remember, the first budget amendment of the year, we had budgeted in 2017 to purchase land for the new library, which did not happen until 18. So, we had to have a budget amendment for 18 so we could spend the money in 18. So, several of the budget amendments are a similar situation. Probably the largest difference would be in library operations. When we prepared the budget, we did not know if the council and the district board would come to an agreement or not. So, we prepared the budget as if library operations would continue as they were through the entire year. So, in this amendment, we're reducing the budgeted expenditures to actual. And then, towards the bottom of that section, according to the interlocal agreements, there's two new items there where we're paying the district for operations and also transferring money over to the Library Construction Fund. Also, the city does not budget for grants until we receive them. It's a wise thing, we don't want to spend that money before we even know we're going to have any revenue. So, arterial streets is an example of grants that were received. There's a little bit of tweaking in there as an example, perhaps we have a state grant, we have our match, and then we're fortunate enough to receive county economic development money. And so, then, not as much needs to come out of our Transportation Impact Fund or our Transportation Benefit District Fund. So, it's kind of moving monies around to make the best use of everyone else's money and saving city money for other projects down the road. I do want to point out the council's strategic fund. A couple meetings ago, the council agreed to donate money to the Skagit Community Action Agency for their construction and we have received a signed contract back for that, so we can proceed with that. The Downtown Association, I put that in the budget amendment, so it's there as a placeholder, but they still, I believe, need to have, they're waiting for you, they need to have a nonprofit status as well as a contract. So, we will not be able to spend any money until those things happen, but the budget's in place for when they do. And a Library Construction Fund also has some major changes because we're anticipating to do design work and architectural work this year. And little things happen like in the ERNR fund, we're getting some money from the Brickyard Creek Subflood Zone for a boom mower, so it's going into stormwater, transferring over to ERNR to go towards the purchase of that piece of equipment. The tractor truck for the sewer went up about $92,000 from when we first thought it would, New Year's, new contracts, also new pricing. And we got the garbage truck in solid waste last year instead of this year, so it all works out. But, so, those are just a few highlights, just to help kind of explain what sort of things we have in budget amendments, why we do them and why I show them fun by fun to kind of help follow the bouncing balls. I'd be glad to answer any questions that council might have.
If there are no questions, then would someone like to make a motion? The motion is actually on page 227, to approve the ordinance 1896-18.
Okay, I'll move that we approve the ordinance number 18...
97.
97-18.
96, sorry.
96. An ordinance amending, an ordinance number 1890-17 entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget for the City of Seadrwelly, Washington for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2018."
Second. Okay, a motion has been made by Councilwoman Dunley and seconded by Councilwoman Carnegie. It's a motion to approve ordinance 1896-18 and ordinance amending ordinance number 1890-17 entitled, "An Ordinance Adopting the Annual Budget for the City of Seadrwelly, Washington for the Fiscal Year Ending December 31st, 2018." All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. So, next items are the information items. Are there any questions or comments regarding that? If not, we'll move on, anything for the good of the order? Okay, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
All right. Motion carries. We're adjourned.